Everybody's ready, we're going to get the meeting up and running, work session. We're going to modify our agenda just a tiny bit to kind of go through. Instead of going through where we just open up the floor for all department heads, we're going to kind of save that toward the end and look at how much time we have left and we'll open up for some that are there. I know there's a few things that we need to, and I'm just going to go straight down the line under kind of mixing the general discussion along with the rezones portion of the meeting, just so that we can get through to the interest of time. But we'll go through first and have, I know Kirk's got one road issue or two road issues, so I'm going to let you kind of lead us off if you don't mind to go through this.
We're taking plates on Crossbow in Thompson. There needs to be a three-way stop there. We've got a lot of trouble with speed through there. It's a real small road. We're planning on doing that. Also Cruz is going to be working on Jerusalem Church Road soon. We're going to sit in and widen it before plating season hits. And we're not talking real wide, but kind of like we did on Hill City, just a foot or two where we can. And that way when we pave, we'll be able to go a little bit wider with that street.
And that's all right down here. Kirk's the kind of guy when you say brief, he goes brief. So it works out really good. I think both the three-way stop typically what we've done in the past is to go ahead and get that on the agenda. It's a side back road, so it's not one that we'll mark and we'll make sure it's signed well prior to, and then make sure we put the proper signs on all three sides. It's already a speed help approaching that intersection, so the stop sign shouldn't really be affected because the speed help goes over it before we get there. So I'll deal with that. Any questions for Kirk? All right, then with that, I'm going to move it over into planning and development. We've got, when we have our regular meeting at 5:30, there's a couple of rezones. This is for the purpose of just making sure that the board can ask any questions that are of the record of Wes. So I'm going to let him go through the slideshow on the rezones that we are going to be considering at our meeting this evening. And that way you've got a chance to clarify anything that you may have questioned. Wes, so you.
Okay. All right, let's go to the first slide. And this is, we let Ms. Patty go first because we knew this one was going to be a while and the order is like it was. So can I go backwards?
There you go.
Get Ms. Patty out of the way. This is RZ 190436, and it's Patty. It was 8:25, Buchanan Road, Jasper, Georgia. Point 179. The road split their property and relieved it of its parcel, and the parcel did not line up with the parcel that was want to be joined with. So the request was to combine with a tract. And you can see there, it's very hard to see that little bitty piece, but you can see it on the survey on the right and that where the arrow is pointing down. And then they joined that with the property to the south of there, on that triangle on the right. And the planning and development recommended approval for our rezon request. And that's where it was there. So let's go back up to the.
Before we go, yeah, does anybody have any questions on Ms. Patty's before? She told me that she could go to bed in one parcel of property and use the bathroom in another parcel of property before she applied for the rezon while she was trying to do it. So, all right.
Okay, this is RZ 190401, 8:31 on Jones Mountain Road East, Talking Rock. It's agricultural AG, and they wanted to rezone 10.21 acres to highway business to add to their long rifle range. The reason, again, of course, is 10.24 acres. The remaining 47.80 acres was to remain agricultural and to be used as an archery range. As you can see, on the left is the top parcel, on the left of left is the parcel that's going to have 10.51 acres taken out of it to be joined with the parcel on the right side. That is the rest of that long rifle range. Okay, and here as you can see, the zoning at the property north of there where it was joining was HB and the property to the south was Ag. And over on the left, right side is the survey, and you can see the 10 point, yeah, 2.1, 10.21 acres that is going to be, which requests the rezon to HB. And the planning and development staff recommended approval of the highway business of the 10.21 acre tract.
So I know we've got, the slides were what were originally presented before the planning commission. When this went before the planning commission, looking on the record, it was voted 4-1 on the approval to go to HB. There's two separate issues with this piece of property. There's first, the highway business recommendation, and then second is the conditional use. So they had to vote on the highway business before they could then vote on the conditional use for the actual operation of the range on there. So this is the first half of the same. I mean, they're both on the same parcel of property, but it did require two separate property votes to get it to that point.
Okay.
You want to go through both of them and then open for questions after you go through the conditional use side?
After y'all, because it really is intertwined, so.
I think they're the same. The only difference was it was 3-2 in the vote with the planning commission for the conditional use. You had 4-1 for the highway business and 3-2 on the conditional use.
Correct. Everything was the same except for they had some additional conditions.
Are those included on the presentation?
I was going to look and see.
No. I know they're in our packets for the actual vote for tonight.
They had a time scheduled from sundown to sunset. They had certain holidays if they weren't going to be using. If you go down the list, you will see. So there were a lot of suggestions, and that's what they came up with at the end.
Yeah. If y'all got it in front of you, but no shooting before, one hour after sunrise, or after one hour before sunset, no nighttime shooting, no shooting on Sundays before noon, no use of tracer rounds, no use of exploding projectiles, no shooting on Christmas Day, no shooting on Easter Day, and no rounds larger than 30 caliber were the conditions that the planning commission recommended be attached to their approval of them.
And that's what they voted on.
Okay. So a couple of questions I had about it was, has there, was there any kind of noise study done for, I know they had, I think, I remember this from the, that they were going to close their 300-yard range in order to open up a 500-yard range that would focus the noise in a separate direction. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Did they do any kind of noise study to see if that would in fact help the property owners around?
I think the only thing they did was if they built berms, that was going to be the best way. If they just build a metal building, it just goes up. So if they take earth berms, it makes the best soundproofing. And I guess they were talking, there may be some suppression rounds, I don't know.
When I watched the meeting, again, earlier today, one of the topics that we're talking about was the natural flow of the mountain that separates the homeowners from this piece of property versus where the existing 300 yards. The existing 300 yards, all the sound pushes down the hill through the valley to where the houses are, where they're looking to move it. It pushed it on the other side of that mountain was the way they described it in the thing. And it pushes it actually toward the sheriff's office gun range. So instead of going toward residential, it pushed the noise toward the sheriff's office gun range, Jones Mountain, was the way that they presented in the slides. But as far as an official study, I didn't see them present. Maybe you guys, I didn't see an official study that had been done on.
Is there any way to enforce that they do in fact close that 300-yard range? Or is it just their word saying that they'll do it?
I think with the security system that they have and the ability to see what's going on, I'm sure we could ask for a review if it's conditional use and they don't need the conditional use. And I guess it's something that can be sanctioned. I don't know.
I think there's more of a legal side of it from Phil and the two separate parcels.
They have the right to open a new one at the same point.
So they could run both. If, I mean, and I know that Mr. Griffin said several times that he, and I believe him. I don't doubt that at all.
But from a legal standpoint, yes.
But it was more whenever he is no longer in charge, someone else came along and wanted to open that.
If this is on the parcel, correct if I'm wrong, but you're asking a question about the gun range, just on the parcel that was not in front of the board.
Correct. I believe the 300-yard range is on the original piece of property.
That was not part of the application to place any restrictions on the property that was not before the board.
So all the restrictions and conditions would apply to the news.
So we could not do anything to, if they, if someone in the future decided they wanted to open up the grand rezone, there's nothing we can do to stop that, correct?
Correct. From your perspective, yes. I'd like to put any restrictions and stuff on. I haven't, I have my own conditions too.
But they could always change this.
I'm sure.
They could change them instead. If, would they be able to withdraw this request and refile it with a way that would say that, that they, once they closed the 300, they would not reopen it? And that would be enforceable by us?
They would, they would have to refile the application with all of that property included in it. So all of that property would be before the board would be considered a option. But I don't know what they'd be asking for on the new parcel. There would be a form of a conditional use because they don't need a conditional use. They already have the law to do.
I know.
So I don't know. I assume that you're asking, but you know, is it, is it a new issue? It's kind of like filing a will, but you know, go on a private court and there's no assets in it, so.
That's, that's just the part that concerns me about this. Because I'm, like I said, I'm not saying that Mr. Griffin is listening, oh, don't hear me wrong.
He'll do whatever he says.
Right, I have complete confidence in that. It's just later down the road, I just, I just worked with those homeowners there because that, it sounds like it's going to be better in the short term, but will it always be better for me? I just, that's my issue with this.
Do you hear any questions?
No questions.
No questions?
That was on my question set.
All right, so that'll be on the agenda during the 5:30 meeting. We'll go through the rezones. That'd be one of the items that we're going to, we'll get through. Next, and it's another item that's on the agenda for the, for a regular scheduled meeting is the water purchase. And I know Mr. Phil Dean's got a, he gave each of you a handout to kind of show. If you wouldn't mind, would you go over what you presented to the board so that they're...
Yeah, yeah. So basically what I'm doing is it's just a breakdown of the two locations that will be purchasing water from Cherokee. Combined right now, where we purchase from the Nelson tank, which is Bennett Riverstone Subdivision, we supply Tate and Marble Hill along with the other few municipalities. We got a little over 1,600 customers. We have a daily allotment of 284,000 gallons a day that we're allowed to draw at the Nelson tank. We've been exceeding that. So when we exceed that, we incur a search order. Well, that is, it just doubles. We go from paying $2.40 a thousand to $4.80 a thousand. In a nutshell, we're spending about $80,000 to $1,000,000 a year in search orders because we're going over that. Buying this capacity, it don't mean that we have to pay for 500,000 gallons a day. We pay for what we use. We're just buying the ability to have 500,000 available to us. At $2.50 a gallon, and then it's $2.50 a thousand after we purchased the capacity. April 1st, Cherokee's rates will be going up. They're doubling. It'll be $5 a thousand and five, or $5 a gallon, and then $5 per thousand. We was the first in line, and there was three, if I'm not mistaken, three other municipalities behind us buying for this water, this excess that Cherokee had. So we requested for 500,000 and was approved for it. And with y'all's approval, we'll have an excess of 780,000 gallons a day available from Cherokee County at those two locations. So, you know, it, yeah, it's for the future because everybody knows Pickens County has no, major state body of water running through it or touching it. So it is very hard for us to have a source of water. So, and plus it's actually cheaper to purchase water than it is to treat it. And so it's, it's just, I think it's important that we need to get this, that way we're moving a step forward instead of step backwards.
I think to put it in perspective with the dollar amount is if we were to have moved forward and completed the treatment plant at a grand beef, the maximum amount per day we could treat with EPD withdrawal would have been 300,000 a day. That would have came at a cost of about $10 million to get that 300,000 gallons a day. This gives us 500,000 gallons a day for 1.2, our $1,250,000. We're buying capacity to be a wholesale customer that has that much available to us. So then we have the ability to service more customers for ourselves. We also have the ability, because we already have a line connected on Cobra with Jasper, that if they have an additional need for water, we can sell them the wholesale water that we purchased from Cherokee, which is what we do from, from other sources that we get. So it gives us the ability to, to meet the needs of all of Pickens by increasing half of the gallons of potential for every day. Nothing says, you talk good.
I try. It's better on paper than talking.
That is pretty good. So and where I said we were going to kind of mix the order up just a little bit under the general discussion, if anyone's paid attention to social media or read the progress that came out this week, one topic that continues to keep coming up is the issue of the homeless shelter and the property on Martin Drive and the reasons behind why the county has went before the spirit court to try to prevent the movement into the location at the time. I've asked Bill, and this is something, this isn't the only time we've ever done this, when we had issues with the Whitestone Valley landfill. At one point in time, we took some time during our work session, a meeting, to discuss and go through all of the parameters around that. We also did it when we had the audit firm that was going through and doing the audit, we did a similar, so that we can give a more in-depth detailed presentation so that everybody can be able to wear, the board can be made aware, but then everybody in the public can be made aware as well of the more intricate details of it. So I've asked Bill to kind of put together a presentation to do before the board during the work session, which is the reason behind the shift. And so Bill, I'm going to turn the floor over to you and let you run through that if you don't mind. And this is the abridged version so that we can get it. You're going to laugh at me when I say this, when I say that for time's sake, we could get it condensed, because when it gets done, you're going to think, wow, what does the long version look like? No pressure.
Is that the long version?
He's the long version. That's it.
Okay. So basically, we've got five things here. The three involved agencies in this, compliance and non-compliance and unincorporated Pickens County, which is for background purposes, 735 Martin Road within the general compliance framework, the general compliance framework itself, and then the culmination of this, which is basically breaking down the order of the Superior Court that was issued last Friday. And it's important for us to get all of this on the record now, considering the fact that that order was issued and then the path, some path is going to be taken over the next few weeks or months. So the three involved agencies, we've got the Pickens County Fire Marshal, we've got the Department of Environmental Health, and we've got Pickens County Planning and Development Department. And each of these, the arrows basically mean each of these have their own laws, both the laws in terms of what enables them to do what they do, and then the laws that they enforce. They have their own rules, they have their own procedures. And they're really on separate tracks of work as that, as that goes. And we felt like it was important to pull ahead at the beginning and lay out this framework so that it can eliminate any kind of ambiguity or confusion down the road about who does, who does what and what role someone is playing in the process. Because it will move around, as we'll see a little bit later. And even though they've got separate streams, by the way that the ordinances of Pickens County are constructed, we've got links that are created between planning and development and the Pickens County Fire Marshal and between Pickens County Planning and Development and the Department of Environmental Health. We'll get into the specifics on that. So because the ordinances make the links, we on certain days, doing certain things, have to look at this as a group of three. On most days, three individual agencies. On some days, a group of three. Now, there'll be colors throughout this, but they're always going to mean the same thing. Red is going to be for the fire marshal, blue is going to be for environmental health, and green is going to be for planning and development. And so just to keep from just having words everywhere, you'll just basically be sitting boxes at places in this. Now, we talked about compliance and non-compliance and unincorporated Pickens County. I think it's important to keep this in mind, no matter what situation we're dealing with. And we deal with multiple situations here. We just happen to have this one in front of us now that's very interesting. So we look at 2022 planning and development statistics. That's basically 17 items or categories that create statistics. You can see them there, not going to go through them all. It starts with building permits and ends with signed permits, and we've got 15 things in between. Now, in 2022, those were the numbers that were processed. 791 business permits, and then we've got 647 and 155 of the business licenses. So what that basically comprises is 2,267 compliant situations where people complied with the law in 2022. This number only gets bigger every year, as Wes will tell you. Now, we add environmental health to this. And environmental health in 2022 had 297 new septic permits, 36 septic repair permits for a total of 336 compliant situations. So we've got 2,267 compliant situations plus 336, gives us a total of 2,603 compliant situations. Just in 2022, and we're talking about a county of 34,000 people, 30,000 which live in unincorporated more or less, and this is all in unincorporated. There are no city of Jasper or Nelson or Talking Rock items in here. So it's a high number. But yeah, we feel like that with our compliance situation versus the non-compliance situation, we have a vast majority of people, as those numbers indicate, that are in compliance. 2,603 situations in 22. We only have a small minority that are not in compliance. And we're very, very lucky as a county to have so many that are in compliance versus those that aren't in compliance. And, you know, this is something we realize literally every day. And so if, when we do run across situations with non-compliance, it is very, 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 very much in the minority because most people work hard to comply, as our numbers indicate. So we've got our three agencies. Now, when it comes to the way that they enforce the law and regulate people, they have, each individual one applies the same laws, the same rules, the same procedures, the same regulatory practices. Two, 735 Martin Road, which is where the dispute is now, at least the one that is dealt with the court order and at the private store about in yesterday's edition. But it also applies to everybody else equally. And that is something that, I mean, it's always on our mind. It's not like we really have to work hard to do that. It's just the right thing to do. So when it comes to the laws, the rules, procedures, and regulatory practices, everyone is equal. And the reason, the reason that we wanted to point this out is because there's just so much noise around this particular matter out there that would suggest otherwise, and it's just not the case. All right, let's talk about 735 Martin Road within the general compliance framework. This here, I'm not going to read this, because I don't want to get on the Chris, Chris's bad side right off the bat. But, but, but this is an email of February 28th from Ashley Craig, who's our planning and development office manager, to Gina Johnson, who was at that time one of the representatives of Refuge of Jesus. And this is a fairly, even though it's short, it's a fairly comprehensive communication piece. And we wanted to display it for two reasons. First, it shows at a very high level the breadth of what we're dealing with as it relates to the agencies. It also shows one of the many instances where they were communicated with in terms of receiving direction. So part of this, this Lisa's part, part of this had, of Ashley's email was telling them what to do with open records requests because they just didn't follow correctly. A second part was Ashley telling them what to do with the fire marshal because there were trouble, there was trouble there. Another part was telling them what to do with environmental health. Another part was telling them what to do with planning and development. This is the when, excuse me, the what slide. And that is, as we'll see later, has to do with land use determination and building code. And then there was the planning and development piece that had to do with when planning and development would get involved, which is basically at a certain point when environmental health has done part of their job and Shane has done part of his job, but we'll get to that in a little bit more specifics. But again, the point of this is, is that there are various communications. This is one that happened to be in writing, but basically covered all the bases in terms of providing direction. Now, when we have our compliance and non-compliance situation, if we revisit this graphic, we have a vast majority that are in compliance. We have, we have those situations. We have a small minority of, that are in non-compliance. Unfortunately, 735 Martin Lane is just one of those that's not in compliance. We'll drill down on that in a little bit when we break down the court order. Now, general compliance framework, because this is, this is really sort of the playing field where all this happens. So we have code ordinances that's at the center of this. We have chapter 16, building and building regulations. We have chapter 38, land use development standards. We have chapter 67, land use intensity distance. They're separate, but they overlap, and they're all in play in this particular situation. So if we take our agencies at the top, this is how those three circles play out in actual practice. We have chapter 16, 38, and 67. We hit those comprise the core land use compliance and building code compliance standards that are enforced by planning and development and basically as it's fed into by environmental health in some regards and the fire marshal in some regards. That's planning and development. But we have fire safety standards that's administered by Shane. They're incorporated into this by those sections of our ordinances. We have septic standards, environmental health incorporated into this by those sections of our offices, and we have our overall picture there. And that's a framework of what's applied to everybody, including 735 Martin Road. And that is what, in words at an extremely high level, Ashley's email provided information on. So what we have in our section 38-8 of the ordinances are basically 10 base compliance development permits. I'll just point out three, three examples in here. Major subdivision certificate, Land Disturbance Permit, the Building Permit. But we have 10 in there, and we've got a couple of those that play in this situation. But really, from a documentation standpoint, a lot of part of our ordinances where those chapters come together, it's all driven by these 10 documents and the process to get these documents applied for and issued. And so with general compliance, and this, this part's really, this part is, is really important. It's always in play, but it's particularly at play in this situation. Because if we've got a situation where a certificate, certificate of occupancy is the objective in the situation, that's everybody's objective to build anything. And that's certainly the folks down at 735 Martin Road's objective is to get that COO, as you'll see in a few minutes when we break the court order down. But there's three things that have to happen before that, before that occurs, and that this is basically involving all of these agencies at some point. And that is, there's a pre-application part of it. There's an application part of it, and there's a post-application part of it. Pre-application is basically just making the decision that you're going to comply. We're going to go get the application, and we're going to file it, the application, so we can get a permit. Then you've got the application itself. Does it have the right information on it? Does it have the right documents attached to it? All of that. So both of those can, can basically be situations where there can be non-compliance, and they have their consequences. And then post-application, we'll, we'll, we'll keep this one in the back of our mind because we'll drill down into this one pretty good when we get to breaking down the court order. So you've basically got to get all three of these before the COO is issued. So this is an evolved version of the chart that was in the progresses, a vision yesterday on page 11A. There's only been a couple of things changed on it, and it's more cosmetic than, than anything else. So the one that was printed yesterday is certainly still 99.9999% of what that is. We're just going to flash it now, but we're going to break this down at the very end and close. All right, now we talk about the order of the Spirit Court of Pickens County, civil action there, you see. This was issued on Friday. There you see, this was issued on Friday, March the tenth. The petitioners were Pickens County, Georgia, and Shane Callahan, and his class is Pickens County Fire Marshal. The defendant was Refuge and Jesus. In this part of the presentation, they'll either be referred to as Refuge or the defendant. When they're referred to as Refuge, that's us in our notes. When they're referred to as the defendant, that's something that's pulled right out of the court order itself. So that's why there'll be two different, two different terms used on that. That's the property y'all, I don't know if it'll be addressed by now. The notes on this, basically, it's a one-point-five-one acre parcel located in unincorporated Pickens. On November the eleventh, the owner, EMF Investments, or twenty-two, the owner, EMF Investments, bought it. On January the ninth, twenty-twenty-three, the lease was executed with Refuge. Refuge is a Georgia invested corporation performed pursuant to the Georgia nonprofit corporation code, so they are not a proper organization. The lease restricts Refuge's occupancy of the premises to homeless shelter and office space. And interestingly, and we'll talk about this twice, interesting, the lease also states that in, in paragraph twelve, in relevant portion, that property shall be used to comply with all federal, state, county, municipal laws and ordinances, and any applicable rules and regulations. Now, I want to be clear about this. The county will never involve itself in a matter between less or and less E on a lease matter. That's not why we're citing this. We're citing this because we want this to speak to the recognized importance of the less E to comply with the law, no matter what level it is, it is at. And that is, that's, that's why we're just basically pointing this out. So whether this is a lease violation between less or and less E, we have no position on that whatsoever, but we are looking at it as an example of, of the fact that it's the importance of doing all of this that we're about to get into in detail is very important. All right, the, the grounds presented by the county and, and by Shane. The premises is not compliant with current fire code. The premises is not served by an adequate sanitation system. The premises is not suitable to house sixteen individuals. Improvements have, have been made to the premises without the authorization required fire permits, and an agent of Refuge informed Fire Marshal Callahan that the residence currently housed at twenty-eighth Main Street would be housed at seven thirty-five Martin Road owner before today or tomorrow, whenever, whenever they're supposed to be out. That created, that created the urgency of filing petition. Now, a previous order of the Pickens County Superior Court ordered an eviction of Refuge from that location on Main Street in Jasper, and it was issued because Refuge refused to vacate the premises after the lease agreement expired. And you can see basically the, the site for the Superior Court case there, in case anybody wants to grab it. So the order was defendant, its agents, and invitees are enjoined from occupying the property until a certificate of occupancy is issued and the current stop work order is lifted by petitioners. Defendant, its agents, and invitees are enjoined from constructing, altering, I mean, enlarging, altering, repairing, moving, demolishing, or changing the occupancy, billing, or structure located on the property, or to erect, install, enlarge, alter, repair, remove, convert, or replace any electrical, gas, mechanical, or plumbing system, the installation of which is regulated by the technical codes, or to cause any such work to be done. That's a big one. And then, just very generally, to drive the point home, defendants are enjoined from violating the existing stop work order. Now, number one, we do have, we do have a presentation note on this. Basically, the way that this part of the situation arose is the county received a formal citizen's complaint on March the second. Fire Marshal Callahan responded by inspecting the premises on March third for compliance with the Georgia minimum fire safety standards and procedures, and on the basis of his visit, he issued the stop work order based on various non-compliant omissions and commissions of Refuge. Now, there are both omissions and commissions that are non-compliant. We'll get to that in a minute. And A, the failure to submit for approval of a new construction plan sealed by a Georgia licensed professional engineer for the intended use of the premises pursuant to his written notification to Refuge in February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. B, the performance of construction without authorization in the form of an approved engineer construction plan, i.e. the item A. C, the performance of certain non-compliant electrical work. D, the performance of certain non-compliant plumbing work. And E, the performance of certain non-compliant structural work. Structure, non-compliant from a procedural standpoint and non-compliant from a technical standpoint. So the duration of the order, the earliest of a second court order that will be issued pursuant to appear to be conducted at the earliest possible court date of the assigned judge's calendar, or thirty days from the date of the current court order, which is March the tenth. Satisfying the court order, basically pulling two things out of what we just read through. Get the stop work order lifted, get the certificate of occupancy issued. That's what has to be done at a high level, only those could think. There's a lot involved in that, but it, but it, but it's only two things. And part of this presentation and part of our interaction on this is going to be to make sure everybody understands what these two things involve, involve, so that, so that they can try to comply with this. So Shane, the fire marshal enforcing Title twenty-five of, of the official code of Georgia annotated, and then planning and development enforcing our ordinances. Now, the certificate of occupancy we've got on the planning and development side, Title twenty-five, there's one provision in Title twenty-five that gives Shane the power in his own right to deny a permit or request for certificate of occupancy. However, our approach here is, is we incorporate that into the planning and development side, and basically the certificate of occupancy is handled on that side. And then we've got the Department of Environmental Health that is incorporated with regard to the septic tanker system situation. The stop work order. This is Fire Marshal's Callahan to letter to Refuge and Jesus, which preceded all of this. Three mandatory conditions for operations and occupancy. That is an engineered construction plan, number one. Number two, that the engineered construction plan must not only be submitted, it must meet all of his standards. And if the engineered plan is approved, then the construction must proceed according to the plan, be verified by any, by his, speaking of my subsequent inspection. This, this was a letter to one person. He sent the same letter to another representative of Refuge, and he also had various other interactions and communications with him that specified these same things. So let's look at it graphically. It all starts with the engineered construction plan. Three, there's three things that can happen with that. It gets submitted and approved. It gets submitted but not approved. It does not get submitted at all, and that's the case right now. If it gets submitted and approved, then it moves on, and it's, and it moves on to construction, but that construction proceeds subject to further inspection by Shane. If it's submitted but not approved, it does not move forward, something has to be resubmitted. If it doesn't get submitted at all, which again is where we are now, it's just got to be submitted. If it's not, nothing happens. And not submitting that holds up, as it turns out now, it holds up environmental health, and it also holds up planning and development. So this is a very, very, very pivotal part of this whole thing, is to get this plan so we can even get to the rest of this. So if the plan is ultimately approved, and there is a proceeding to construct, subject to inspection, if there's any current unauthorized work, non-compliant construction out there, that might be have to reverse and code it. So it could be, depends on basically the review. It could be that all of the electrical plumbing and structural work that was noted earlier, it may or may not have to be reversed. It all depends on what the plan says, and if it's approved by, by Shane, it's got to be compliant with the plan. And future construction must comply with the approved plan. So all of this part of this, all of this part of this that's related to the fire marshal and the going back and forth about what's going on with the fire marshal's stop work order is one picture. All right, the certificate of occupancy. We see our three chapters again. We see our involved agencies again. We see our, our ten development permits again. There are two of them applicable here. One is the building permit, and that is covered in all of our chapters, sixteen, thirty-eight, and sixty-seven, with sixteen being the primary. That's the domain of planning and development, which is one of the stars in the green box. We have septic tank permit, septic system permit. I'm just going to use tank for purposes of this, of this discussion. That's in chapter thirty-four. That is the domain of environmental health, and we, they've got to basically have that septic term, septic tank permit in planning and development, at least the first part of it, before there are any application for a building permit can be processed. Then we've got basically the incorporation of the fire safety standards coming from, coming from the fire marshal. And then there are two additional requirements that, that we have to go through here with them. One is, they've got, they've got to get a business license per chapter eighteen of the code. That's just very basic. Something that's not so basic is the second thing, which is the land use determination per chapter sixty-seven of the ordinances. That is going to be required also in a similar manner as a septic tank permit. That's going to, that's going to be required before we basically entertain the application of the building permit. And let's talk a little bit about that, and what that means, and what it is, and what it involves. All right, so section sixty-eight, sixty-seven dash eight of the ordinances contains a table, and it is entitled permitted and conditional uses by land use intensity district. What that does is, is the table cross-references a bunch of, of listed uses vertically with eleven land use intensity districts horizontally, and in each little box where they intersect, there is either a C, a P, or an X. It's either permitted, permitted with conditions, or, or it is not permitted. Four examples of the land use intensity districts are agricultural, rural, residential, highway, business, industrial. Y'all see agricultural, rural, residential, highway, business a lot with what, with what y'all have to deal with. Seven thirty-five Martin is designated as highway business land use intensity district. So that's got the land use intensity district covered. However, on the vertical side of the table, table six dash one-one does not include homeless shelter as a listed use. Therefore, it is an unlisted use. When there is an unlisted use, that's proposed, as it is here in a sense, even though we've got no applications. The ordinances say that the Pickens County government will make an administrative determination as to whether or not the use is permitted in the land use intensity district, even though it's not listed. Wide latitude is given in this discretionary administrative determination at the administrative level. The use can be deemed to be similar to a listed use, and that listed use can be assigned to it, or a conditional use may be assigned, or, and this is, this is directly out of the ordinance, the proposed use may be denied altogether. And I pull that straight out of the ordinance because of the altogether emphasis on that. So there's wide latitude here in terms of what planning and development can do with regard to dealing with any unlisted use, including this one. The preliminary thinking is, is that we're not going to deny it altogether, that we will assign a similar use to it with two similar uses being under consideration. One being an extended state facility and the other being halfway house. Now, in each case, in either case, all special substantive requirements and conditions and stipulations imposed by other provisions of the, of the ordinances must be satisfied in order for the assigned use to be deemed permissible, such as the minimum lot size that's imposed regarding extended state facility. In each case, all procedural requirements of, of state law and the county ordinances must be satisfied in order for the assigned use to be deemed permissible, such as a fairly substantive public notice and public hearing requirement that's imposed on halfway proposed halfway houses. So we've got a lot more work to do on this as it sits now. One scenario might be, I'm saying one scenario, might be that both extended state facility and halfway house are initially proposed pending the public notice and public hearing requirements that are imposed by law on the halfway house situation. But that will allow every element of the public to be heard on this that wants to be heard, and that would basically provide an opportunity for a lot of input to come into this way, not in a social media way or a piecemeal way, but in an organized way that is subject to being recorded and documented. And that's the kind of information that we want, the kind of information we want to make decisions on. Now, there's an appeal from the land use determination per chapter sixty-seven, and it goes to the Board of Appeals. So if someone does not like a land use determination assignment or an outright denial, it can be taken to the Board of Appeals. This is the chart again, and this is, we'll close on this. Let's break it down. We've got compliance standards, we've got the agency, we've got the applicant input, we've got the agency output, we've got approval on completion. Let's start with environmental health. The standards that are regulated there are on-site sewage management standards, there's an application that has to be filed for this, there's a septic tank permit pink page or denial that, that's imposed on the application, and if there's an approval or not approval, then there's a septic tank permit yellow page that's issued. With regard to the fire marshal, fires and life safety codes in Title twenty-five, and the underlying rules and regulations are the standards. The engineered construction plan is, is the input at this point that would result if it's approved in the stamp construction plan or in denial. And then the occupancy load is the, is the ultimate output and certificate of occupancy input into planning and development. Planning and development has two pieces of this. One is the land use determination we talked about, the other is the building codes permit part we talked about. The land use determination form is the applicant input for land use. The preliminary land use determination or denial would be the reaction, and then the final determination or denial would be the last stop at the administrative level before it would then go to the Board of Appeals if it, if it is appealed. And then the building code situation, we've got a building permit application. There we've got to have, have basically also the engineered construction plan and also the septic tank permit page, and then the building permit or, or denied for the output, and then the final certificate of occupancy if everything goes. Remember those three boxes before in terms of pre-application, application, and post-application? Clearing all three of those boxes results in the COs we saw, we saw in that last graphic. We have the septic tank permit input coming from environmental health. We've got fire marshal's input coming into the building codes. We've got land use that has to basically prompt also the application permit for a building permit, and that, that at, at a chart that has twenty boxes on it is how all this works at a high level. Now, on the first line, third box, you'll see a little yellow check mark with a green check mark, and you'll also see it in, in, in the third row in the third box. That's what's been supplied in the seven thirty-five situation. What has not been supplied is everything with the red X. So the fact that those red Xs exist, particularly with regard to the third box, is, is, is partially why the situation is where it is right now, and why it's headed down the path that it's going to go. That includes a septic tank permit. Now, I believe that that has been stayed until the fire marshal gets his engineered construction plan, and then I believe environmental health wants to look at that, and planning and development certainly wants to look at it as well, even probably before we get an application. Here we have our three boxes again. All right, where it is right now, none of those have been satisfied with regard to any of the agencies. Real problem, as we saw in, in the language from the court order, is that notwithstanding all those red Xs, the fire marshal has determined that there's unauthorized construction that's the Fire Marshal has determined that there's unauthorized construction that's been conducted out there in those three areas of the, of the five violations that we noted in the technical language of, of the, of the court order. And so we have our situation with our compliance and, and non-compliance with them being, again, one of a small, small minority of folks that don't comply with this across any of those three parts of that arrow. And I turn back to the lease, even the lessor of the property recognizes the importance of compliance with local law. So how do we get past this chart? Stop work order lifted, certificate of occupancy issued. How do we do that? Satisfy the three boxes. How do we do that? Go through the chart. And then, if we can do all that, then there will be no red box for 735 Martin Road. And they will be a member of the vast majority of folks that apply to the county. That's it.
So before we walk off, I know we do have to close this one. Anybody have any particular questions from the board that y'all want to ask? Any unturned stone that you might have found there that we didn't cover?
I think, I know it's, it's, it's involved, and there's a lot of technical material, but I think that's the confusion issue that continues to happen. People don't understand the technicality of, Fire Marshal has their standards, planning and development has their standards, environmental health has their standards, and they all have to work together. So, um, trying to, trying to communicate that for everybody to, to understand in the abridged version that we, we can't have to give him a hard time. He, he likes to, he likes to get real thorough and in-depth sometimes. But I appreciate the hard work on, on putting that together, and I appreciate, uh, all the different departments that work closely with you getting it all prepared very, very much.
This man here deserves a special round of applause.
All right, so I know we're about to wrap up the, the work session. I know we didn't go through the normal, uh, as far as calling on department heads individually. Is there any pressing matter that any department heads need to make sure that we get on the work session today? So we don't move right past them. With that in mind, it is now 5:20, so we're going to go ahead and close the work session. We'll have our regular meeting starting at 5:30, so we'll have a ten-minute, uh, interval between the two. But thanks again for everybody for coming, and if you're here to stay for the, the other, we'll start back in ten minutes.